It is now six twelve P M. I will call to order the planning and zoning meeting for the July ninth, two thousand and twenty, for the city of Españo. I do need a roll call to make sure we have a forum. Director Hubler, can you do that? Or?
Commissioner Don Casados.
Here.
Commissioner Clyde Hill.
Present.
Commissioner Donna Quintana.
President.
Commissioner Nisa Martinez.
President.
Vice Chair Eric Martinez.
President.
Chair Earl Wright.
Present.
We have a forum.
Okay. Second order of business is the pledge allegiance. We start our round of stand on the current and vote again with the flag. I'm going to go ahead and eat it since it's a little longer. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item of business is approval of our agenda this evening. Does staff have any changes to the agendas presented? Well, the commission that changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, we're having, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Can't hear you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, I muted my phone again, a little rusty. Been a month. Um, next item of business is approval of the agenda. I actually asked, while I repeat it now, any changes from staff of the agendas presented?
No, any changes.
Zero.
Commissioners, any changes to the agenda?
Were we going to flip flop items six, one, and two due to the presence of folks in the audience? Or is that?
I understand both applicants are in the audience, so there was no need to flip it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Actually, I do have an issue with case two thousand and twenty dash zero six, which is a commercial site plan review. In my opinion, we don't have a complete submittal, and I would rather not spend the time going through the case because of the discussion that will ensue. We were under instruction to run this sort of meeting. And I feel like with some of the missing submittals, this case is going to take an extraordinary amount of time. So I would move that we table that item from this agenda. Or propose to.
What what exactly is missing?
I'm sorry, who was that?
That's Allison, and what is missing?
A little bit of clarification. I'll not request, Mr. Chair.
Commercial site plans require landscaping and irrigation plans. They require a drainage plan. None of those have been presented. There's also the issue of fencing and buffering to the property to the north. There's not adequate information in the plan, I believe, for the commission to render a decision or for the public to properly review the application.
So there was not either of those or any of those at the previous month's review of a very similar plan? So why are you ignoring past precedent and asking for it now?
Um, I think there was some latitude. There was also discussion of onsite draining at the last commission. And quite, um, this has been an ongoing issue, and we're going to deal with that later in Roman numeral late concerning what consists of a complete packet. But I think we're running the risk.
You're.
And exposing the facility.
But you, so we haven't set some, you guys set a precedent.
Excuse me, Ms. Gillette. I'm actually addressing the commission at this point, and we're at approval of the agenda. And that is my recommendation that we table this case.
Chair, Commissioner V. Hill.
Commissioner V. Hill, you have a four.
I noticed the same. Although we did do what we did last, last, um, last meeting. It shouldn't excuse us from doing it all the time. And it's not setting a precedence as far as I'm concerned. I think that we did, we did have enough discussion last meeting to realize what was going on, especially with grading and drainage. This we don't have, and if we don't stop now, then we set a precedence. If you have made a motion to table the meeting due to the lack of, uh, of an incomplete packet, I second the motion.
I had actually made the recommendation, I did not make a motion.
Then I will make the motion to table. Sorry, I'm looking off my computer.
I believe Director Hubler has something to say about this.
Two thousand and twenty dash zero six, commercial site plan review.
Commissioner V. Hill has made a motion, which I second.
So the motion is to table case two thousand and twenty dash zero six from this agenda?
Commissioner Quintana seconds.
That's correct.
That was a second from Commissioner Quintana. Uh, we have a motion, and so I need a motion to actually approve the agenda with the tabling of that item.
Does the director get to speak about this?
Uh, I need to get a motion on the agenda, and then we can discuss that.
Well, you have a motion already to table that item. I would like to address that.
Uh, Director Hubler, uh, you have two minutes.
Okay, but I'll be much shorter than that. I would just like to say that staff strenuously.
Unmute yourself, uh, Director.
Thank you, sir. Um, I'll be fast, I just want to say that staff strenuously objects to this motion. Both this case and the case that we reviewed last month, we brought forward to this body as an opportunity to engage this body in the review of redevelopment of small local businesses. Um, the case that we're reviewing this month is exceedingly similar. In fact, it's only one and a half properties north of last month's case. Staff reviewed the application, felt that it met the requirements to forward to this body. We recognize that it's obviously this body's choice to act on that submittal. Um, but we do feel that this is, regardless of precedent or other similar situations, that this is an inappropriate action to take. Take, and we request that this case be heard. That concludes my statement.
I appreciate your statement, um, but it's, it's a responsibility of this body.
Hearing a double standard.
To follow, excuse me, Director Gillette, you are out of order. I mean, sorry, Ms. Gillette. There are requirements under the code. This commission and members of this commission are concerned that applicants aren't being handled fairly and equitably. Um, and thus the motion to table this.
So how is, how is hearing a case differently than you heard previously not being equitable?
Excuse me. Meeting monitor, Ms. Gillette is out of order.
I don't care.
That's unfortunate. Vice Chair Martinez.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I know we've talked about this on at least a couple of occasions with regards to incomplete submittals. And of course, more recently, we talked about, and I mentioned and I inquired about the stringent, use of the code and criteria about requirements for submittals stamped by licensed professionals, because there's some reference to that in our code as well. And so, you know, I can't remember verbatim, but part of that discussion was to look at, how we can be friendly to small businesses while still meeting the requirements of the code without be on, you know, without requiring, um, such burdensome requirements as we would a more larger development where a more thorough grading and drainage plan would be needed, traffic analysis, that sort. So I did raise that question at the last meeting. And we, you know, my, I guess interpretation of that is that we needed to work on that uh, in order to adequately accommodate, you know, small business requests such as these. Now, looking through the staff report, it seems that some of those, well, that all the criteria are addressed. So can you clarify which you feel, I know you mentioned a grading and drainage plan, and there, and there is mention about drainage in the staff report. Are there other things that may have been unaddressed?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, I didn't want to get into specifics of the case, particularly for this reason. I think we will spend a lot of time in debate about this case, basically because we don't have adequate materials to make a decision on. I'll leave it at that. We can, uh, I would like to move on. We haven't even approved the agenda at six twenty-five. Um, we have a motion to table this case. I need a motion to, uh, if that's the case, I will, okay, we have a motion in a second. I will call the question on tabling case number twenty dash twenty oh six, which is a commercial site plan review at eight fifteen. I believe it's A and B, Posse O Niata. Um, I need a roll call vote on that.
This is a motion to amend the agenda to table this case, correct?
It's a motion to table this case, and then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Don Casados.
Commissioner Casados.
Yes.
Commissioner Clyde Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Clyde Hill. Commissioner Donna Quintana.
Yes.
Commissioner Nisa Martinez.
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Eric Martinez.
I don't have enough information to know the reasons for tabling, so no.
And Chair Earl Wright.
In favor of the motion to table.
Motion passes.
So the motion to table that, uh, case number two thousand and twenty dash zero six, um, to table.
Mr. Chair, don't you need a motion to, don't you need a motion that's date, um, that there's a date certain to revisit the case?
Uh, the case wasn't actually heard. But we can certainly go back and table that. The issue is an incomplete packet. In my mind. If the maker of the motion would care to amend it, but the case wasn't actually heard, and that's what I was concerned, I didn't want to get into the discussion of the details of the case. We can do that for matters of the commissioner, matters of staff at later in the meeting, but I would like to move this meeting along.
Mr. Chair, as a point of order, I think that we're okay with the motion as is, since the case hadn't started, that it really we need a date certain.
That's what I'm assuming. It wasn't even considered on the agenda, so it wasn't an action item on this agenda.
Your next thing is we need to approve.
So commissioners, I need a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of that item.
Motion to approve.
I second.
As amended?
As amended.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by the previous motion to table case two thousand and twenty dash zero six. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second. Commissioner V. Hill.
Uh, and again, because we're doing this virtually, this takes a little time. I need a roll call vote on the motion to approve the amended agenda.
Commissioner Don Casados.
Favor.
Commissioner Clyde Hill.
Favor.
Commissioner Donna Quintana.
In favor.
Commissioner Nisa Martinez.
In favor.
Vice Chair Eric Martinez.
In favor.
In favor of the motion to approve the amended agenda. Motion carries six to zero. Next item of business is Roman numeral four. This is public concern or business from visitors. Is there anyone either online or in the chambers who has concerns for the planning commission, not related to cases that we're having? And if there's anyone here to speak on the case that was tabled, you would have the opportunity to do that now if you join the meeting, specifically for that case. Because that case will not be heard this evening. I don't see anything, however, do we have anything from the public participants? Seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting in matter to public concerns. Next item of business is the code enforcement report. And if you could introduce yourself for our massive public audience here.
Good afternoon.
Justin is muted.
You can unmute your mic.
It's muted. Turn it off. How about now? Yeah, okay. Good afternoon. I'm going to go ahead and start with my presentation. Um, you guys flipped to the first page. It's my year-to-date cases. Um, there's a hundred and seventy-one. I have a hundred and twenty-four open cases, five that are court pending, and forty-two that are closed. If we move on to the next, um, next part, it's just my March breakdown. Um, I only come here quarterly, so this is a quarterly report. For March, I had a total of fifty-four cases. And if we go to the April breakdown, um, I had a total of thirty-seven cases. If we go to the May breakdown, I had a total of twenty-six cases. And the June breakdown, I had a total of sixty-six cases. And a lot of these were weed issues that we have going on. Um, to the next part of my report is just a clean and lead update. There's just seventeen properties that are currently on the clean and lean list. Um, it talks about the nine properties that are still remaining. Um, and then moving on, um, this one is just talking about the needle pickup that I did. Um, we were suggesting, um, I know we brought it before the Public Safety Committee, that maybe the community service workers that the court has would be able to pick them up. Um, I'm also available to pick them up if, if needed for anybody. Then moving on, um, it's just talking about our roadside vehicle sales. I just want everybody to know that the vehicle sales, we do not issue vendor permits for them. Um, and we're working with the motor vehicle department to start enforcing them. So, um, we do not issue vendor permits for road vehicle sales. And then the next one is just a before and after picture of ten oh eight Caibey Hill that was on our cleaning lane that has been fully cleaned up and demolished. And I stand for any questions from anybody.
Justin? Justin?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question on the clean and lean update?
Sure.
Justin?
Yes.
My question is, we understand the four properties on RFP Phase One are complete, right?
That's correct.
Can you explain the four properties on the current RFP Phase Two for us?
Yes, I might defer some of this to Richard, but I think, um, one of them is two thousand and fourteen, if I'm correct. Um, the other one is, uh, what is it? Ten oh eight Caibey Hill, what's that one? Um, at the end of my report, I did do a before and after photo of that one. That one's been demolished and cleaned up. Um, eight oh three South Riverside, I didn't put a photo, but it has been cleaned up um, with, of all the trash and weeds fully. And then five oh six East Chumis is still, um, we're waiting for funding to get its asbestos removed and demolished.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was on the. Don't see any. So I just want to thank you and appreciate it. It's a real challenge now, um, with the public health issues we have. So please take care of yourself. See you later after I have to manage to get this out myself. Living in contact, this item is very tricky, but we really appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to introduce Ralph Martinez is with us. Ralph, if you're able to speak, and we've got, um, the summary of the good work that Patrick Shilter's been doing over the last several months, and also I'm just mentioning a little bit of how some of that's changed during the COVID. So Ralph will be brief and just kind of speak to some of these points, but happy to answer any questions. Take it away, Ralph.
First of all, I want to thank you, um, uh, commissioners for allowing me this time to, uh, to sit before you and give you an update what we've been doing, what we're doing now. And for one part, I just want to wish, uh, Nisa Martinez would have. It was July the fifth that passed, so I want to acknowledge that and sure have people later. So.
Thank you.
I'm gonna. You're welcome, you're welcome. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna keep it brief, but I want to give you guys the full scope of what's been going on from, from the time that we signed the lease of the, of the building up until now. And, uh, and so I'm gonna just give you guys the lay of the land. I'm gonna do it as briefly as I possibly can. Um, some of the things that I talk about will fall into our permitting regulations is why we're here, is to give an update on what our permitting regulations are. Some of the information I give might not, might not, um, fall within, within what our permitting regulations are. But at the end of the day, all this information is very, very valuable. And so we signed our lease to the building in early January. Upon, upon signing our lease, uh, we, we quickly, uh, opened up a section of our building to act as a quarantine center. We were allowed ten people in the designated space, and, um, and we begun doing overnight, um, overnights and guest services, distributions and services. And so when we opened up this temporary warming center, um, we opened up the warming center because we still had to apply for our tenant improvements permit through the state of New Mexico. And so we figured we had a little bit of time in order before we were granted that permit. And so, um, we had been telling our guests, once we get our permit for the tenant improvements, we will have to shut down temporarily to complete these tenant improvements in order to open on the bigger vision. And they all understood that, they all appreciated that. And, um, and so we had been, we had been putting that out there, letting them know, preparing them. Um, in the meantime, we had invited planning and zoning. We had invited, um, the chief of, uh, of the fire department to come in to give us a little bit more clarity as to what we would need, um, to be fully regulated as far as the tenant improvements were concerned. And at the time, um, the biggest thing that we were looking at that was found by planning and zoning and the fire chief in Españo was egress windows. Um, now the building that we're located in, uh, it's a, it's a solid block wall building. And so at the time, we thought, okay, that's going to be a little difficult, but we can do it, we can get past this. And so, um, and so we started putting, we put together our proposal for our tenant improvements. And so, um, and so we started putting, we put together our proposal for our tenant improvements. Now, we got our permit approval in early March. And so when we got our approval to begin the construction inside of the building, um, we said, okay, what are we gonna do now with the guests? And, um, we, we're gonna have to shut down temporarily while a week, a week after we got our tenant, uh, approve, uh, tenant improvement permit approval, that one's like a tongue twister, sorry. Um, COVID nineteen hit. And COVID nineteen pretty much sucker punched the world. And when COVID nineteen hit, um, we said, okay, it's time to shut down. So we shut down completely. So what we did was, we decided to start doing, um, distribution services and referrals outside in the parking lot according to the regulations that were put forth by the governor. Now, the whole community, but turned the pathways and they were like, what are you guys gonna do about, about this population? Um, the fear was that the homeless was gonna spread COVID all over the community. And we wanted to protect our, um, um, the individuals that we served, plus we wanted to protect the community. And we didn't know what to do, I'll be honest with you, we didn't know what to do. We quickly jumped on, uh, conference calls and Zoom conferences that were being put together by similar agencies that, that dealt with homelessness across the whole nation. And, um, these, these other organizations, they didn't even know what to do. There was organizations that had been, uh, up and running for over thirty years and they felt lost, they felt really lost. There was some communities that had buildings that were viable to act as quarantine centers. There was, there was communities that had buildings that had been running as a shelter, but their space, um, didn't meet the qualifications as a quarantine center. So they had to shut down their operation and find alternative means. And so everybody was scrambling around the whole nation as to what to do during this COVID time. Um, now we started playing with different options, we started looking at different options. And, um, the option that we decided was, in order for, um, the population that we serve to feel comfortable, they're gonna need, uh, uh, something to feel comfortable with. So we decided to start purchasing tents and handing out tents. So we started to do that, we purchased tents, we were handing out tents, we were handing out camping gear during our distribution services, our distribution services are, were running and still are running Friday, uh, Tuesday through Friday from four to six thirty. Um, and, uh, and so, and so we begun to do this. Now, uh, what the thought was, there was individuals that started finding our parking lot as a comfort space. And when that happened, we quickly came together, we said, what do we do right here, what do we do right now? And although we knew that it fell outside of our, our permitting allowances. And so we, um, we allowed individuals to, um, to find a, a comfort space within our parking lot as long as they were meeting the, the six-foot or greater distance restrictions set up by the governor. Um, we quickly, we quickly, um, found that there was many individuals. And, 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 and this was almost a good thing because it allowed us to get a lot more numbers that, uh, that we were looking, um, that we were looking to generate as far as who, who are, who are the individuals that are homeless? What are their ages, are they male, are they female, are they under forty, are they over forty? Are they veterans, do they have kids? If they do have kids, where are their kids staying? Uh, all this, all this data of, uh, collections, we started to, to do all this. Um, we, we, we quickly got together and we, uh, we put together some, uh, some campsites. We designated some campsites around the parking lot. We put together a camping agreement, the individuals that, um, we, we designated eleven camping sites and they all filled up. And, uh, and so we, we allowed for individuals, we, we came up with the camping agreement of dues and dones and, and what we would, um, expect from them. We even came up with, uh, with, with, uh, a forty-eight hour eviction notice for any individual that might fall outside of what we allowed, and they would be evicted from the premises. Um, this took place for about three months. We, uh, we closed the camping site last week, um, at, in order for us to be able to turn our focus back at getting our doors open. Um, within those three months, there's a lot of things that happened. Uh, there was some, there was, there was some unexpectancies and some, some hurdles that we were able to, to jump over, um, gladly. And so within those three months, after we got, after COVID hit, uh, we started doing the tenant improvements in the inside. Um, we, we opened up some doors, we got the egress windows installed that we needed. Uh, we were able to put in eleven different cameras. We have three cameras on the outside and we have eight cameras on the inside of the building. Um, the cameras, I'm able to look at from my phone twenty-four seven, I'm able, able to play back. It's a state-of-the-art system that we are able to, uh, to, uh, to put in. Uh, we had a visit from the state fire mar, from the state fire marshal, uh, in the early stages of our tenant improvements and be a part of, of the, the regulating factor. And so when he, when the state fire marshal came in, he, he said, okay, after looking at everything, there's a couple of things that I'm gonna, um, need for you guys to get before we can fully open. He, and he ordered that we, that we would need, uh, fire suppressant system, which is a sprinkler system and a fire alarm system with that, with the pull handles. And those are totally unexpected items that we didn't plan for. And so, um, our contractor from Avani, Mateo Pachino, he's been working diligently with, uh, the fire marshal, uh, with the building owner, um, with the, the designer of the plans for these two specific items. Um, the contractors that are gonna come in and do the work with these two specific items. And so that kinda, that kinda threw us on a halt, uh, and, and COVID. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to say that as of last week, we've been able to vet through those details and we have that, um, that we made with, with the commission as far as what, what we would get. And I, I'm not going based off of this, um, and I could if you guys would like me to, but I'm just, I'm kinda just ringing it and laying it down as it played out in my head. Um, uh, but one of the biggest things that, that I wanna highlight is that in the past two months, we've been doing, we've been doing this, uh, referral services to, to, yes.
Mr. Martinez.
Yes.
You're actually breaking up a little on us and, um, and with all due respect, we do have some cases to hear tonight. Uh, so we're hoping this will be a fairly brief presentation. Um, but if you could please kinda summarize it for us and wrap it up. Um, we do have cases waiting to be heard this evening, so, um, I would like to keep, uh, keep things moving along if we could. And, and we are breaking up on your connection a little bit. So if you could please, uh, wrap up and summarize for us.
Can you hear me now? Are you able to hear me?
It's still breaking up a little bit.
Okay, well, we, we've begun some renovations, we've installed some egress windows, we've knocked down some walls and we've installed, we're, we're looking at installing some showers and wanna get some restroom. And we're also working and installing the fire suppressant system and alarms. And, um, we've, we've, we've come, we've come a long way and we have a little ways to go. Uh, but we're hoping to be able to be open within the next two and a half months now that we're back on track, um, after, after the emergency crisis of the pandemic. And so I just wanted to give you a brief update on all that.
Thank you for that. Uh, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Martinez?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Anissa Martinez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank, uh, Ralph Martinez and all the folks that have been working so hard on getting this, um, half, Espinala Pathway Shelter up and running. I know there's a big need in our city, there's a lot of folks out there that are homeless and are struggling with issues. I just wanted to thank you and all the folks that have been working so hard. And we really appreciate your efforts, keep it up, God bless you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Real quick comment, Mr. Chair?
Uh, Commissioner Pridey Hill, let I'll go to Commissioner Eric Martinez.
I'm sorry, you're muted. Yeah, I was, but I don't have anything, I'm good. I was just raising my hand, sorry about that.
So yeah, pay attention. Commissioner Eric Martinez, you have the floor.
Just to, uh, echo Commissioner Martinez's sentiments, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Martinez and your team, um, for your hard work. Uh, we know it's not easy, uh, but you're steadfast in doing what you're doing and, and, uh, great job. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, my chair. Uh, do appreciate the work and, again, um, definitely in need in the community and, and let's hope this continues, uh, to go forward and be a success for our community. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Next item of business is, uh, items for consideration, new business. Um, the following case is quasi-dudicial in nature and the hearing will be conducted under the provisions required by the New Mexico Court of Appeals. This includes identification of parties and swearing in of all those who wish to provide testimony. The opportunity of cross-examination to ask questions will be provided to all parties. Um, so the case we have before us is case number two thousand and twenty dash zero seven. This is a special use permit renewal. Alex Alas of El Pilar is the applicant is requesting renewal of existing special use permit approved by case number two thousand and seventeen dash twelve and expiring July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. The existing special use is for the operation of a food truck on property currently addressed as six twenty-five North Riverside with a UPC of one, zero four seven, one two zero, two eight five, four twenty. The subject property is located in the B two general commercial district. Um, commissioners, before I, well, I will open the public hearing for case number two thousand and twenty dash zero seven. Um, commissioners, is there anyone who has a conflict of interest or has had ex parte communication regarding this case?
No.
Uh, no one is speaking up, no one is raising their hands. So I believe, uh, none of the commissioners. She said, no, Mr. Chair. Um, so seeing that, we will move on and I will ask staff to present the case. And I do need to swear in, who will be doing the presentation? Is Ms. Gillette on the line or on the meeting?
Yes.
Um, can you please share your video? Thank you. Um, and can you raise your right hand? And under penalty of perjury, um, do you swear and affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, presentation of the case, please, thank you.
For the special site care, special use permit renewal from the two thousand and seventeen application, uh, where you all, uh, granted a three-year special use permit. Um, as there is no language in our code for how to manage food trucks, um, the applicant had written before you under the previous directive recommendation for a commercial site plan review, which you guys, uh, denied and told him, uh, to apply for a special use permit. So here we are, three years later, um, going back to make sure that that special use permit has been in compliance and making other further recommendations based on, um, anything in our code that has changed and needs updating. So since the scene of El Pilar has become a staple of the Espinala food scene and it's one of the few places in town that can be visited outside, one of the only places right now, especially given the governor's recent order that, um, you know, will not be, uh, negatively affected necessarily by the restaurant, uh, indoor closures. Uh, Lloyd's Road got a good, our busiest roads that runs between House and Hamlet and it's created a great environment. The, uh, trees, blockers, umbrellas, uh, they created a great whole gardens based out of, uh, tires, you know, that looks wonderful and taking steps. In addition to the food truck, the applicant has a storage shed and food smoker and, uh, the, uh, commission's previous recommendations, they brought in a porta potty and there's a North Central Solid Waste Authority dumpster. Uh, this is part of a larger site, so it's almost two acres. And the eastern end of the site is relatively undeveloped. Uh, there are still a few lingering pieces from the property owner's uh, previous business as a mobile home sales lot and for reasons I'm not sure of, um, a large five, five-car garage that is there. So again, since we have no specific, um, kind of regulations that address mobile food trucks, fixed or, or movable, we just focus on the special use permit criteria. So the DRT shall utilize the following criteria in formulating a recommendation to the planning commission and the commission shall utilize the following criteria making its determination. So one, the request substantially conforms to the comprehensive plan and the establishment of the use applied for will not, under circumstances of a particular case, be detrimental to health, safety, peace, comfort, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity of such proposed use or be detrimental to or injurious to property or to the value of property in the vicinity or general welfare of citizens of Espinala. So this absolutely conforms to their comprehensive plan and everything that we wanted to create is a kind of a community atmosphere, a gathering spot. They have made themselves, um, a friendly neighbor. The, um, the site plans, the kind of computer-generated site plans that were included in the packet were actually generated by their neighbors from across the street at AccuCopy. Um, they've created the kind of place-making that the comprehensive plan recommends and it's certainly not detrimental to anyone's health, safety, welfare, peace, comfort, um, and anyone's property nearby. If anything, it is an immense benefit to have. Uh, criteria two, there are sufficient parking facilities that are adequately designed, shielded, landscaped, and lighted to serve the use applied for based on the requirements of this chapter. So the current parking situation does not comply with the two thousand and seventeen conditions. Now, given what I heard from, um, the feedback during yesterday's site visits, there was some concern about that. Unfortunately, neither Richard and I were here during time that this case was approved and so we don't do retroactive follow-up on cases that we were not involved in. And so we did not realize, uh, until we came to review this case that it had not completed compliance with the requirement, most specifically to set up two ADA compliant spaces. So the property owner did, uh, put in the wheel stops for eight spaces. They put in the two ADA signed spaces, but the thing that they were missing and since ADA compliance was for the paving and that paving to connect to the paving scenes that would lead to the actual place for people to order food. So, uh, we, this is part of the conditions of approval, we'll recommend this be remedied. Um, and one of the things we are recommending is that taking the ADA spaces down from two to one. So there are only eight spaces that are required for this lot. Um, and to have a quarter of them, so two of them, which is the original recommendation, the ADA compliant is far more than we recommend for businesses of a greater size. So rather that they be used for digital, uh, site parking and have the one DA van compliance space, um, as necessary by the National Disability Act of nineteen ninety. Uh, criteria three, provisions for onsite, offsite ingress, address, circulation are in the city of a communal design guidelines of public serving. Use applied for adequate to meet traffic needs of the proposed use and the proposed use will not adversely affect neighboring properties that are affected by the traffic generated. So there was some confusion, uh, as first from the public works department around, uh, the previous requirement to erect a stop sign. Applicant said that they did erect one and then the public works, uh, so from their lot onto, uh, the city street, um, right there, and the, the public works department told them to take it down. So we have spoken with the public works department, we've come to an agreement and they will be re-erecting, or one of our conditions is that they re-erect that sign. So we have spoken with the Public Works Department. We've come to an agreement and they will be re-erecting or one of our conditions is that they re-erect that sign. Um, you know, as part of that, onto Las Vegas Street. Okay. Um, the DOT in, you know, in the meantime, had no commentary in terms of the DRT process about, uh, the access onto Mexico sixty-eight or Riverside Drive and they don't need to apply for any kind of access permit. Criteria four, the setbacks of the building and parking facilities from the property lines right of way and adjacent land uses are in conformance with this chapter and provide protection to and a transition from residential development. It is being contemplated in the vicinity and the height of the bulk of the proposed buildings and structures are compatible with the general character of development. So all existing development conforms with the originally approved site plan. So we have no issues with that. They have complied, uh, in all of those areas. Um, the site plan, landscaping, screen planting, and fencing, uh, is compatible with the adjoining areas. So this is one of the nicest looking properties and sites, um, you know, in that area. There are four trees that they erected, the, uh, thundercloud, uh, purple leaf plums are beautiful. The, the flowers that they have planted are, you know, vibrant and attractive to anyone driving by and the nice orange color that they have, uh, chosen um, is, is very effective at attracting new customers and just, you know, bringing a little bit of a pop to was otherwise a kind of droll Riverside Drive, so. Um, so the, in terms of, uh, uh, part B, the Planning Commission still supplies, prescribed point in time, which is special uses to begin. Uh, we're recommending a five-year special use permit be issued to the applicant starting July fifteenth, so next Wednesday of two thousand twenty. And then C and D are not really commentable at this point. No stand for any questions.
I have a question for Allison, for Planner Gillette, please.
Yep.
Stana.
Hi Dana.
Hi.
Uh, hang on, just a second Commissioner Quintana.
Sure.
Um, did we have the recommendation from staff?
So the recommendation is that, uh, we have conditional approval of the special use permit with five conditions. The special use permit will take effect on Wednesday, the fifteenth of July and will be valid until Tuesday, July fifteen, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, barring any relevant changes to the zoning and development codes of chapter three fifty, the applicant needs to apply for a new permit um, at the July twenty twenty-five Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And then the note that special use permits are not transferable should they decide to move locations. Uh, they install one van-accessible ADA parking space, uh, eleven-foot space and fifty-inch striped aisle, paved, marked, and labeled. Uh, convert their second ADA space into an open parking spot for all and remove all, um, you know, kind of all conjoined ADA signage. Uh, they need to remove a covered speedboat from the property and all their, uh, knockable vehicles, RVs, et cetera, which have been sometimes seen to be parked on the property, um, and then have been moved across the street when, when they were noted. Uh, they need to be removed. They can't be parked there or on adjacent properties. And then the North Central Solid Waste Dumpster, uh, needs to be enclosed with wooden fencing or a wall and that final design will need to be approved by planning staff.
Thank you, Ms. Gillette. Uh, Commissioner Quintana, you now have the floor for questions.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Planner Gillette, I, I ask you for your patience because the reception broke up quite a bit and it was difficult to hear. But did I understand that from the special permit that was granted with conditions in two thousand seventeen that not all of those conditions were met by the then and, and also now applicant?
That is correct, but that's also not uncommon without enforcement from the city. And because, um, the two people that were involved in this original issuance of a special use permit were gone, uh, before I, uh, even arrived. Uh, we, you know, like I said, we don't go and backcheck previous permits to make sure everyone's in compliance. And they were giving us no notice, but they gave me no notice, uh, previous director Isaac saying that this is something that needed to be monitored and enforced. And so I don't feel that it's fair to punish the applicant, um, even though they didn't comply. I, I find that that's a very common. It's very common around the city. And so we, we really have to lean on people, especially for um, paving of ADA spaces when many people have gravel and dirt parking lots. Um, for example, with, um, the flower shop down at the Delta, it, you know, they were continuously occupied and we gave them a business license and we had to pressure them and needle them continuously for months until they finally paved that space. It took us almost six months to get them to do it. Unfortunately, you know, it, that, that's what it takes around here and when new planners and new directors don't know about it, you know, they, they can't kind of be that enforcement.
Uh, you were indicating that there's no specific language on how to manage for an application for a mobile or fixed food truck. I understand that. But for the special use permits, uh, in, in this particular case, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission granted three years back in seventeen. Is there a limit within our code of how many years this special permit can be active?
Uh, well, each time is, the limit is five.
And is there a limit of how many times that can be renewed?
No.
Okay.
Our special use permit, um, also applies to things like daycares. Um, you know, and we don't want to say like a daycare has to close after a certain period of time. So I'm not saying that it's the best language in terms of our special use permit, but because it's so broad in the number of uses that it addresses, um, it wouldn't, in its current state, be a good idea to have restrictions and as thus, it does not on the number of applicable times it can be renewed.
And for my own clarity, the conditions that you're putting on for the special permit this time, are, are they incorporating the ones that weren't done before?
Yes. So, um, the, it, it's kind of the, the finishing part of the, um, the ADA space. So like I said, they, they labeled the ADA space. They put up the sign at the appropriate height of sixty inches. They made the wheel stops, the kind of blue ADA color. But the key that was missed and that was not enforced by the city is that they needed to be paved, either with asphalt or concrete. And so we're gonna, that is part of the conditions right now. And then the other one is that they reinstall and we'll work with the Public Works Department about this stop sign that leads on to Las Vegas Street.
This question may be better for you than the applicant and I'm presuming the applicant is present. Am I correct?
Uh, yes, I believe they are.
I'm in another room.
Yeah.
Um, the porta potty, is that ADA compliant?
I don't believe that porta potties are, but I don't believe that as an outdoor food establishment that they are required nor are any, um, private entities required to have ADA compliant um, establishment. So I think, as you know, that the city right now is going through an ADA and Americans with Disabilities Act um, review process right now, but that's only applicable to city buildings.
Okay.
So outdoor food cafes are not required to have porta potties. We asked them to have that, but that's, that's not a requirement, you know, of most food trucks. Or any food truck.
Okay. All right. And, and I'll post my other questions to the applicant. So thank you, Planner Gillette.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? I'm looking. Commissioner Martinez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, Ms. Gillette, um, on the field review, uh, yesterday, no, uh, and, and the, uh, looking at the proposed ADA parking space, you know, I was concerned that there, uh, be provided an accessible, an accessible path from the space to the area of business. So I would just note that in your coordination with the applicant.
Right.
I think it needs to be in keeping with the, with what that space serves, so, uh, make sure that there's a accessible aisle.
Yeah, our plan is, is to, uh, use the space that's clear, currently closest to the paving stones as the recommended ADA space. And then the aisle will be on the left-hand side of that directly adjacent to the paving stones path that is already there.
And then, um, on the, uh, requirement of the stop sign, it's not a condition in the current conditions. Um, but you do mention that, that, uh, you had asked that they install it, I believe.
You're absolutely right. I dropped the ball on that. Uh, if, if you, if you guys would, uh, do me the honor of adding that, um, in your approval as a condition number six, I would be most grateful.
Well, my, my comment is the, is the opposite.
Oh.
I don't believe, um, just because of my background of what I do, um, don't believe that a stop sign is required or would it be a good space for it because the entryway is so undelineated? Um, it, the potential for that stop sign to be hit continuously is probably pretty high. Plus the amount of traffic into and out of the establishment wouldn't rise to the level of needing a stop sign. So I would advise against putting in a stop sign.
Would you be open to if the eastern portion of the lot, um, was developed, would, um, you as a commissioner be open to adding a stop sign at that point?
I would say if, if, uh, depending on the use, potentially, and if the uh, ingress and ingress to Las Vegas Street is more well-established and delineated, it could be useful.
Okay.
That's a big maybe.
Okay. I mean, um, you, as, you know, as an engineer and a civil engineer, I, I am perfectly happy to kind of trust your guys, your instinct on this and your, your knowledge.
And then, uh, my last question is, so, uh, we're requiring screening on the, uh, for the, uh, dumpster? How about for the porta potty? Is there any thought to that?
I had not considered that. You know, we, I guess the screening for the dumpster came that that has kind of been a consistent recommendation that we've been giving to new commercial businesses coming into town. Um, especially after we found somebody living in a dumpster, uh, behind the Baskin Robbins, um, to try and close that off and, and make it a little less accessible. Um, I, I'm open to discussion about screening off the porta potty for certain. Uh, my one concern about the porta potty is just access. Um, I don't know how it gets cleaned. You know, the exact specifications of how that works and so how much space someone who comes in to clean it needs. Um, and if the screening is compatible with that.
Uh, maybe, maybe, uh, it would be, uh, something we could ask the applicant if they were open to screening that, uh, at the same time that they're screening the, uh, the dumpster.
Sure. Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you, um, Ms. Gillette. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, I have to get my meeting back. There we are. Commissioners, any further questions of staff?
Yes, uh, yes, Mr. Chair, Clyde, Commissioner Beal.
Commissioner Beal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Planner Gillette, there's, there's a power line running through the property, uh, there closer to the right of way of North Riverside Drive. Do you know the width of that, that easement and who owns that easement?
I do not. Um, there is not an existing survey, um, of this lot that we have been able to reference.
Okay. You, you would probably find it in Santa Fe County Clerk's Office, am I correct?
It, it just actually doesn't exist. We did contact the clerk's office.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna do a little bit of research while we're doing this. I'm gonna see what I find, uh, at the clerk's office right now. But I, I'm, I'm concerned with that easement and who owns it and how wide it is because the smoker's underneath it. And I'm wondering if they have permission to occupy that easement. Um, and again, depending on how wide it is, uh, it could be, there, there could be some encroachment issues of which, uh, I think your office should, should be concerned with. One of the things that, one of the, excuse me, one of the things that, uh, one of the resources that you might be able to tap is, is maybe, maybe HEMIS co-op, maybe they have something on that. Uh, but, uh, that, that's all I've got.
So HEMIS is included in the design review team and they had no commentary to provide on this.
Okay, wonderful.
And considering, um, I, I don't know how difficult it is to move a smoker, but that was a previously approved by the design, uh, by this commission and I'm not sure that if it's going to be a real difficulty and liability to move the smoker, that we should punish them for our lack of previous due diligence.
Despite our lack of due diligence and, and despite the, 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 uh, the approval of the, of the past commission, uh, that, you know, that this thing could fly, move forward, do you think that that is looking after the uh, safety and welfare of the public to leave it there?
I guess that's up to HEMIS to, to make that determination. And if they had no feedback for us originally, then I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to push them on it. Um, but they, you know, they, they did not respond with any, any feedback to us. And so apparently they did not think that it was an issue.
Okay, uh, uh, and you did brought, you, you did bring it up to them, you said?
So they are included. Um, we send out, um, all our packets as part of the design review team, uh, review process and everyone sends us back our feedback. And if we don't hear from them, then we reach out to them again. Um, and if we don't hear back again, then, you know, we assume no comment. And so we did not hear back from HEMIS about either of the cases as presented tonight.
Okay. All right. Thank you, uh, Planner Gillette. That's all I have, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Beal. Director Hubler, I saw you had your hand up. Was it on that point or? Okay. Uh, Commissioners, any, Commissioner Casados, Commissioner Anissa Martinez, any questions of staff's presentation?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Anissa Martinez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm kind of the old school kind of type of commissioner and I know that several years back, and this was prior to the staff that we have now, when the DRT folks would meet on a case, they would have a meeting and I know that's not hap, that can't happen now, of course, with, with COVID, but and, and, and Chair Wright might be able to, to have some input to this as well because he's been around as long as I have. Um, but when DRT used to meet, they used to literally like have like a representative from like fire department, it was usually the fire chief and police and water and sewer and they would literally sign off and they would write their comments on a sheet. And then we would actually be, those sheets would actually be included with the packet. And to me, it was useful and I was just wondering if, if, and I know that right now staff is including the DRT input into the actual staff report. But I think it was useful for me to be able to tie the input that the DRT, um, managers gave on case. You know, if it was a fire department chief, he would give us comments about access for emergency access or if it was law enforcement, you know, it would be the chief of police and he'd give his input. It's just easier to tie. Maybe we could have names added to, to the staff report somehow. We could tie who exactly provided the DRT recommendation or maybe even a copy of the email. If that's the way that they're communicating with staff during this time. I'm just trying to figure out a way where we can tie, because I think the DRT is one of the most important portions of the staff report. Cause I think the DRT is one of the most important portions of the staff report. Um, because I mean, it's, it's the core infrastructure for any, any type of development. And it, and staff is doing a great job, including DRT input as it is now. But I'm just trying to tie the DRT input to the actual section and to the actual person. I don't know if that's possible or not, but I thought I'd throw that out there.
Certainly. I absolutely appreciate that feedback, uh, Commissioner Martinez. I'm going to refer to Director Hubler. He manages, um, the clear process. And so, um, he, I'm going to let him comment on that.
Yes, and I noticed Director Hubler had his hand up, so Director, you want to respond to that?
Thank you very much and thank you, Commissioner Martinez. I know this is a, a concern that you raised at a previous meeting as well. Um, and as we've gone through the, as we've gone through the, um, COVID times, we've had to be flexible in our process. Uh, so, um, it's, it's absolutely my preference to have the DRT meeting where everybody comes together and we can take minutes and, and get not only substantive feedback, uh, but also, um, you know, collaborative conversation around these issues. And we've focused, uh, harder on some of our cases related to that. Uh, you guys will recall several months back, um, that we were able to get the public work staff to engage, uh, the city engineer, um, the city engineering firm and represented by, um, former mayor Joseph Miasas to come speak to a, a larger commercial site plan. Because as you can imagine, and I don't want to open old wounds, but the, the variety and the scope and scale of development we have vary substantially and, and the DRT comments kind of vary as well. So when we get large commercial, uh, projects, um, there's oftentimes substantially more feedback, uh, from the DRT. On the smaller projects, um, all that we generally get back is an email that says no comments. Um, and so as a result, we've not been including those, um, unless there's, you know, we get one item or an item from one individual, we'll include that in the, in the summary or in the commentary of the report, um, but not bother to include all the other no comment, no comment, uh, in the actual, uh, packets. But, um, certainly that's something that we're, you know, as, as you guys will recall, we had a, a, a letter that was referenced at a previous work session from, you know, more than a decade ago about the challenges with getting meaningful DRT feedback. And that varies substantially depending upon the people in those positions. We've developed very good relationships with the, uh, utilities, um, outside the city, uh, the gas company, uh, HEMIS and, uh, Windstream. Um, and again, depending upon the projects, um, it's, um, higher or lower on their kind of concern level. Um, and so, um, sometimes we'll get specific commentary back about the location of lines and the location of easements. Oftentimes we'll get, uh, commentary back even from them that's, that's, uh, you know, clear that they thoroughly reviewed the case. But, um, again, it hasn't troubled them. Um, it's something that we're constantly working to improve on and, and definitely as we get meaningful comments, we'll continue to include those in the packets.
Thank you, Director Hubler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Anita Martinez. Um, any of the other Commissioners? Questions for staff? Seeing no hands. Um, I do have a couple of questions. Um, and I think you, some have been answered, but I was concerned about the DRT notes. Um, I'd appreciate even if there's no comment, that that be cited. It's absolutely critical to understand what the other city departments and utilities think. Um, and even though it was a decade ago, uh, it's still important today to have that feedback from the professionals at the city who actually have these concerns. Um, my question at this point was, uh, why the five-year term?
Uh, why not? They have been a valued member of, uh, of the city. They are a popular place to go. They have been a, uh, contributing member of the community. Why wouldn't we make a five-year recommendation?
Um, well, even in the report, it says there may be changes to code. And it would actually grandfather them in and prevent the city from actually doing other further improvements to the site. Should code changes occur, hopefully within the next year or two. Um, and also it's a concern that, uh, the conditions of approval from the first, uh, commission approval, which necessarily wasn't this entire body. Um, there's a couple of Commissioners who were here. Um, but that is a concern that the conditions of approval weren't met during the first three years. And to do them five years, what's the guarantee that that will actually be done? Um.
Well, under.
With this application.
If I could respond to that?
Go ahead.
You want to take the question?
Yes, please. So, um, I'd like to, um, highlight that the, the language in there related to the change in code, uh, comes from a conversation we've been having in the office about the idea of potentially eliminating the five-year term on renewals of special use permits, um, and replacing that with a different way to manage, uh, special use permits moving forward. We discussed this briefly in the field during the site yesterday. Um, so, um, that was kind of the reference in the code, more along the lines of if we were to change that and/or if we were to, um, come up with language specific to food trucks that would apply to this property that we could evaluate it in the future as a commercial site, then we would evaluate it as such there. Um, it was not, uh, uh, an attempt to kind of get them grandfathered into any code changes. The, um, the, the bigger issue around, which keeps coming up around the failure to meet the conditions, I, I feel is, is maybe better stated by the fact that, um, be viewed this permit as, as many of the other permits as, um, appropriately approved by, uh, previous bodies or staffs. So as we discussed at the site yesterday, um, and as, uh, Ms. Gillette referenced, um, the determination that was made, um, by the staff at the time that the site was in compliance and that the special use permit did not, uh, need to be pulled or modified, uh, within the timeframe to make those, uh, uh, adjustments. Um, we have to assume as, you know, current staff that that met the conditions, uh, and met the approval of, of either this body or the, the staff at the time. Uh, we're not going to try and second guess permits that appeared to have been, uh, approved and move forward. Now, when we come to renewals or when we come to changes in use, when it comes to other applications, certainly we'll evaluate those against the current standards and it's our understanding of those current standards. And that's what we're doing now. And that's the reason that we are proposing changes to the ADA site. They may have been, uh, totally acceptable to our previous director.
Director, I need you to stay on point and remember we're going to get to this meeting.
The point I'm making is that the conditions, we're discussing second guessing whether those conditions are met. And staff's position is that we have to feel that those conditions were met previously by the simple fact that the, uh, this was not an, an item that we were processing notices of violations for or otherwise.
The question, the question, excuse me, Director, but this is the commission portion of cross-examination of staff. The question is why the five-year term?
Right. And the concern about the five-year term was a failure to meet the previous conditions. We're stating the staff believes that the application, um, the applicant did meet those five years' conditions. And that's all I have to say.
Despite the fact that it's never been picked?
As I was trying to address, yes.
Yeah. So the statement of fact for conditions of findings is the previous approval, the conditions were not met in the fi, in the three-year term. That is a fact.
That's, that's the opinion of the chair and the body at this time. This may not been the opinion of staff at the time when it was their responsibility to enforce that.
Director, I really don't want to debate this. That is a fact of the record.
That's all.
So you're asserting that that condition of approval was met?
I'm asserting that we cannot second guess the staff at the time as to whether or not that condition was met at the time.
I'm not, Director, I'm not asking you to second guess. I'm asking you what the facts are in this case.
My opinion is that I would have a different expectation of a paved parking space than perhaps the previous director did. And it was his responsibility.
Understood. Understood. I still have further questions. What are the seating requirements for a 30-seat restaurant? Are the parking requirements? Just out of curiosity. Um, cause I am concerned why the reduction to only one handicap parking space from the previous commission's recommendations?
I believe Director July addressed that, but I'll let her address it again while I'm looking up the details on the parking requirements.
So for an establishment of this size, we don't, so first of all, our parking requirements are not based on seating. They're based on square footage. And for an establishment of this size, we don't require that many ADA spaces for a place of this size. Most of the traffic that occurs at this location is takeout. They take it and they leave. Well, it's awesome to sit and dine out and then, you know, do some alfresco dining. Uh, most of the people, you know, take it and go. It's, it's a come and go type of place. And so we don't feel, and I certainly don't feel, and I, we have ADA consultants on site right now, uh, doing our ADA transition plan evaluation. So I'm certain we can talk to them about this, but that a small, uh, what maybe 200, less than 200 square foot, uh, um, you know, like, you know, food truck, fixed food truck like this needs to have 25% of its parking spaces be ADA accessible. And I don't think that that's unreasonable. One, you know, two out of the eight spaces is a lot.
I can address the requirements under the parking code, uh, for a restaurant takeout is one space for each hundred feet of net usable floor area. We had just continued with the eight spaces requested by the commission in the previous approval. I mean, we're only making the adjustment to the ADA space to bring that more into compliance with our understanding of the current ADA requirements.
Thank you. And again, I did have a question in the staff report of why there'd been no prior staff action on this. Uh, but I think that was explained, um, adequately. That's prob, uh, part of the problems of these special use permits is there's, there's ticklers that have to be there. And when there's staff turnover, the institutional memory isn't there. Um, and we lose track of these things. Um, and that's, um, just the unfortunate truth of the matter. Um, I think that's all I have. Um, is the applicant present?
Mr. Chair, can I? Can I say something real quick?
Uh, yes, you may. Commissioner Eric Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On, on, since you brought it up about the possible code changes that could be implemented in the future regarding food trucks. Um, and maybe as to the question to you and to Director Huber, um, would it be appropriate to make a condition that this approval would be subject to any, uh, future code changes that would govern an establishment such as this?
So I'd be happy to answer this one. Um, uh, one of the things that we've been talking about since my arrival here, based on my past experience working with regulations around food trucks, uh, was related to having language in our code that specifically addressed food trucks. Um, as it stands, in addition to LPLR, uh, we have one other food truck that's in relatively regular operation as a mobile food truck, um, and then a couple others that are potentially in development for use outside of the city. So the, the need to put that at the top of our list to address those code changes, uh, is minimal. Uh, we've got so many other things we're working on that it's way down the list. But it's certainly one of the things that I would like to see, uh, and, and certainly a, a different way of looking at food trucks, um, than the way that we handle them now. So, uh, you know, with any special use, um, that's a case-by-case kind of consideration for something that's not otherwise specified in the code, uh, both in our jurisdiction and others. Um, and it's designed to allow for exactly that special uses of property. So if at any point in time we had regulations that applied, um, specifically to food trucks, um, we could always, uh, we would by default always start to review this one. Worst-case scenario, um, their special use permit may overlap those regulations by some period of time. Given the speed at which things are happening around here over the last 18 months, um, it's questionable as to whether or not that overlap would be substantial, even on a five-year timeframe. But certainly, um, we're happy to, uh, uh, I think that's what part of the language in that condition was trying to address was that, you know, if there wasn't any other things that they would be able to get permitted under any sort of, you know, specific language for food trucks, then they would need to come back again for a special use permit. But if we wanted to tweak that language to say that if, uh, you know, other regulations apply, their special use permit would automatically expire and they would be subject to those other regulations and the kind of potential for non-conformity, I, I think we're okay with that.
Anything further, Commissioner Martinez?
No, sir.
Uh, so again, I was, I was going to give the applicant the opportunity. This is quasi-dutational hearing. Did you have any questions regarding staff's presentation? Let's see. Uh, that depends on the, uh, the will of the commission. Staff's recommendation is for five years. So we will take input on that. Um, so if you have a comment on that, but if, if there's, uh, so, um, how much did he say staff? Uh, no preguntas para senor Huber or señora Gillette?
Any more questions for Mayor Allen?
And, um, the only thing that I can say that's for both of us is to thank you guys for the big opportunities that you guys gave us three years ago. And, you know, kind of you see the business, you know, we're working hard to bring that up. And we appreciate any, um, ideas or not, that you can give us, you know, to make it look better, before, and, you know, for the safety of the customers and the safety of everybody.
Okay. Yeah. So we're not, that was just for. No preguntas ahora. Yeah. Okay. Um, and sir, you are a neighbor or?
I'm the owner of the property.
Oh, you're the owner of the property. Did you have any questions for staff? Okay. Very good. In that case, then I can turn it over to the applicant's portion. This is a quasi-dutational. So now is your time to get up to the podium and, and tell us about your application.
Yeah, just come stand up here by the computer so that you're part of the. And, and say kind of what you just said.
We can't hear.
And, and Sonja, identify yourself if you would, once, once she looks at you.
Oh, and I do, I also have to swear you in. So before we get started, if you raise your right hand, and under penalty of perjury, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Glad to.
So myself and Santi Duarte, Alex is my husband. We both are the owner of the Alpin Air food truck. First, I would like to thank you guys, you know, for this opportunity to be in here with you guys. Um, thank you, all of you, because of the big opportunity that you guys gave us three years ago. And have you seen, you know, we have worked hard and in the business. And then now here we are applying again for, to extend the permission to keep working. And of course, you know, we're open for any opinion that we can make us, you know, go forward. And, you know, um, fill up the expect, expect, expectation of the city. You know, with requirements and stuff like that, you know? We are in expect, you know, all these things. We don't know. Nothing about you, Chef, you know, Chef, Chef was helping us a lot. Um, but not enough to say, but thank you so much for this opportunity. Um, but not enough to say, but thank you so much for this opportunity.
Good. Moment. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Quintana, and I do.
Uh, Commissioner Dinah Quintana, you have the floor. I'm not sure the applicant can hear you though. Let's check. Let's do a sound check.
Can you, can you hear me? Ken, am I allowed to go into chambers and use a microphone in there?
No, no, not much of a microphone in there. We'll repeat the question if they can't hear you.
Okay. Okay. And this is, uh, I'm sorry, your, your first name again?
Sonia.
Sonia, thank you. Um, Sonia, I have a few questions for you. Three years ago, this was a brand-new business for you, and I congratulate you on your success and your hard work, of course. But why had you not fulfilled the, uh, requests of the previous commission on the conditions of your special permit?
You understand, she's asking, there was a comment earlier about the lack of paving of the parking space, and she's asking, why did you not pave the ADA handicap space?
Talk to that again.
Okay, well, why did they not meet the conditions that were previously set, specifically the paving of the ADA, the handicap space?
No, no, yo no, no, see, I thought it was only to, you know, to put that to space and not to, you say, park it? But we will, if the city needs one.
Did you catch that, Dinah?
Nothing, I'm, I'm afraid not.
So the applicant, in response to your question about failure to meet the conditions, particularly the pavement of the ADA spaces, says that that was unclear to them, um, that they're happy to do that, but that they were not told that it had to be done.
Okay.
But we do have that to handicap space, but if they want us to do it, then we will do it.
She's expressing a willingness to correct the situation.
Okay. In looking at the copy of the lease that we have in the packet, I see that it's actually expired and it's unsigned by the tenant. I can only trust, because they're going through this process, that they have a current lease.
So the question was, the lease that you guys provided was expired and was not signed by both parties. Is there a current lease?
Uh, we have to give another term.
So, Ms. Quintana, the answer was that they need to renew the lease based on the approval of this permit. And that was from the property owner.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this lease expired in two thousand and eighteen.
So her comment is that the current lease that was provided expired in two thousand and eighteen. So perhaps Commissioner Quintana, as the property owner is present, we could ask that question to him?
Oh, okay.
At the main table to the chair.
We did, but you want to picture you, can you come to the podium? Thank you, sir.
And identify yourself, do you, yes.
My name is Eddie Trujillo. I'm the owner of the property at six twenty-five North Riverside Drive. We had a, a renewal of the, of the property, indeed, I'm in the business, but we did not present it to you guys because we were never asked to. Have you got it? But they, they, they want the, the new one, right?
The one that we got. This is the one that, which expired in twenty eighteen. So Commissioner Quintana, the property owner is indicating that there is a more recent lease that was not provided to staff.
Commissioner Quintana, the property owner is indicating that the lease that was in the packet, he's indicating that there is a more recent lease that was just not provided to staff.
Okay. Well, I, I trusted that were the case. Okay. Uh, I have some more questions for the applicant.
Go ahead, Commissioner, Commissioner Quintana, that's okay with the chair?
Okay. Okay. Um, as you have been developing your business and growing it successfully, what was your plan three years ago when we would get to this point? Were you thinking of moving into a s- uh, site-built building, a commercial building? Uh, were you thinking of just staying there? What was your plan?
So the question was, three years ago, what was your plan? Are you planning on staying in a mobile trailer or are you planning on getting a, a building?
I wish I could have a building, but...
Sure. Your first question is, yeah.
Um, um, I love my food truck. That's what I can say. I'm happy working it. Yeah, you know, in the future I can have a restaurant somewhere, food truck, if you can let me, stay there. No, I don't want to go nowhere with the food truck. Um, you know, everybody asks me because I live in Santa Fe. Now, why you want Espanola? God said, go there. And I'm there because of God and you guys. And I'll be there.
Sonia.
Yes.
Sonia. Uh, businesses face obstacles every single day. I'm sure you even woke up this morning with intentions on a certain day and you probably had to overcome two or three of them. Part of that is making plans for the unexpected. What would your plan be had been if we do not approve this special permit renewal?
So you understand the question, what would you do if this permit really does not get approved?
We expected it to be approved because we complied with all the requirements when we initially started this business at twenty seventeen.
I'm sorry, what is the...
As far as we're concerned, we complied with everything that you guys asked. We were very sure that you were going to approve it.
I'm sorry, what is the relevance of this? They're operating a commercial business in a, a business district.
Excuse me, you're out of order.
Oh.
Commissioner Quintana has the floor. Please show some respect.
Okay. I, I do have some genuine concerns. And some concerns I have do surround the access for individuals with disabilities. Even though you have a hard surface, uh, next to a drive spot or an ADA spot, it is not necessarily accessible to a passenger, or shall I say, each, the driver or the passenger having access, accessibility to it. The other thing I'm concerned about is that the porta potty cannot be accessed either. Now, if a driver drives directly into the spot and they get out of the driver's seat, they have to go around their vehicle to get to the hard surface, or they have to try to maneuver through the gravel. Even if a senior citizen or an individual is not very stable on their feet or has mobility issues, the gravel would also present a problem for them. Now, when a person cannot access a business like anybody else, unfortunately, Sonia, they don't get mad at the city, they get mad at the business, and that in turn affects your business. So I would like you to strongly consider those particular situations. Did you look at any buildings that might be available for further growth of your business, more like a walk-in type of, of dining experience?
So to, just to clarify and summarize, the question was, did you look at any other sites that would be a building? Because it would be more accessible to folks with wheelchairs.
You know, if the city wants us to work and the better way for them to get access, and we can go there, but with all these going on, plus, we don't count with, like, you know, the money to invest. And that, I don't understand.
Uh, with respect, this is not applicable to the application?
Commissioner Quintana, did that answer your question?
Uh, I really didn't hear it.
Oh, she, she was, uh, saying that, uh, she was happy to, to make whatever changes are necessary to make their current space accessible and they like where they are.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And this is not applicable to the application under consideration? So a porta potty does not need to be ADA accessible? We will be worse than that.
Excuse me, you are out of order. Commissioner Quintana has the floor. Would you please show some respect?
Earl, leave me alone.
I'm sorry. I, I realize that, but I'm being interrupted. And so is Commissioner Quintana. Commissioner Quintana, did you receive the answer to your question?
Uh, yes, I believe that I do. I, I don't have any other questions.
Another thing, I'm sorry. Um, we haven't had a problem with somebody without having access to our, you know, ordering a food or something, even though sometimes if we see something, we just go out and, you know, help people, but in just three years, we haven't had any issues with that. Just so that you know.
Commissioner Quintana, did you hear the answer? She was saying that they've not had any issues with accessibility and that as needed, they'll go out of the trailer and provide direct service to folks, um, in the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I wish I could have a question.
Commissioners, any other further questions of the applicant? I'm looking. Eric? Why am I not seeing them all there yet? Uh, Commissioner Eric Martinez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask the applicant if they were fine with the conditions of approval as recommended by staff and if they would also be open to screening the porta potty as well.
The question was if we're okay with what Allison suggested you do? And if you would consider putting a fence around the porta potty and... She's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, uh, Sonia.
For the record, I think we should go through each condition and not base it on hearsay of what was said. It needs to be what's actually stated in fact for the record. Um, so I can try and do that. Would that be okay? Pleasure.
Uh, to reiterate the, uh, conditions?
Yes. Yes. Cause we had to get them read into the record and I think it's important they understand them.
Sure.
Absolutely essential.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Hmm? Sure. Except I gotta find it. Do I need to read through them? I understand number one, which was a five-year term. Um, for the special use, that's what staff is recommending. Um, that a van-accessible ADA space, which has to be, and I actually had questions on this. We talked about eighteen feet. What's stated in here is sixteen. But that there needs to be a sixteen-foot wide, uh, van-accessible handicap parking space, and it must be paved.
What about, uh, when to put gravel in it?
It must be paved. That was a condition of the previous approval. It was delivered in writing.
Well, this is just for the van.
This is for the, the ADA spaces. Staff is recommending one, but it has to be much wider than what's there. Um, sixteen, let's see, this is...
Yes, it says.
Say.
Okay.
And a pathway also paved. I think the pavers they have there are good, but Commissioner Eric Martinez had some questions about that, as did Commissioner, uh, Quintana. Um, number three is proposed by staff, is to remove the second space. And it's conditions a little confusing because it says remove all ADA signage. I think it's just meant to remove it on the space to be removed.
So does he want parking?
Right. But it's not, just to be crystal clear, what the intent was. That the, the marker, the goal, the, the speedboat has to be removed. And no other broken-down cars or RVs can be parked permanently on the property.
There's a guy there that, uh, parks his RV, but he stays there at night just to keep, keep, uh, watch on the property.
He goes and parks them.
Is that okay? But he is not permanent?
No. Not according to this. This is a staff recommendation, so staff is saying no. And then the fifth one is to enclose the, the dumpster.
Yeah, put it around the dumpster. So they won't be seen again, huh?
Yeah, just to cover the dumpster. And, so that's staff recommendation. It could be a wooden fence.
Okay.
It could be a wall. The final design of it has to be approved by staff.
Okay.
Um, although I also heard, uh, I believe it was Commissioner Eric Martinez to screen the porta potty also, a little fence.
I have a question about an airplane, and Sonia let us because for us, COVID nineteen going on, I would like, I don't know, to place like a sink with the sun facing something there, you know, by the table where the people can wipe their hands, I don't know, that it's gonna be...
That'd be separate from this.
Oh, that'd be separate? Okay.
And I flagged watching, it's a very good idea. Did the commissioner hear that? I see shaking hands. I can't see everybody at once, sorry. So those conditions are okay with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The commission may do something different, but that's staff's recommendation. And I asked that, I believe. Glad to. Okay.
And I don't think there is anybody online, but I need to check. Uh, there's no neighboring properties over, was this, no?
Are you unmuted, Mr. Chair?
Certified members? So it doesn't appear to be any neighboring property owners who are notified. There doesn't appear to be anyone in the public here or on the Zoom meeting that I see.
Are you unmuted, Mr. Chair? It's, I have a hard time hearing you.
I will close the public. Here, just I don't want to close, we're closing the public comments. And...
We're resolving some technical difficulties. Uh, Chair, I write as reconnecting to the audio.
Uh, Chair Wright is reconnecting to the audio.
Okay, let me get back. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me? Okay, thumbs up. Um, unless you were a lip reader, um, you probably didn't catch that I closed the public. Um, we closed for public comments, so we will now consider action on this special use permit, which is case number twenty twenty dash oh seven. Commissioners, do you have any motion, any discretion? Looking for a hand, there's Eric Martinez, Commissioner Eric Martinez.
I'm ready to make a motion, motion, Mr. Chair.
Fire away.
Uh. Gather myself here. I move, um, for conditional approval of case twenty twenty dash zero seven with the conditions one through five as noted by staff with the following modifications. Condition number two, be stated as follows. Applicant shall install one exit, one van accessible ADA parking space, eleven-foot space with striped five-foot aisle that must be paved, striped, marked, and signed with an accessible aisle to the food truck. Condition number three, either keep the second ADA parking space or convert it into a standard space in accord, in coordination with city staff. And condition number five, enclose slash screen the dumpster and porta potty with wooden fencing, wall, et cetera. Final design must be approved by planning staff.
Because I was trying to capture it. So, you left number one alone. Number two, you said signed and marked with accessible. Did you mean ADA accessible?
Yes. With ADA accessible aisle.
I'll read the conditions in their entirety. Number one was unchanged. Number two was applicant to install one van accessible ADA parking space, eleven-foot space with striped five-foot aisle must be paved, striped, marked, and signed with an ADA accessible aisle to the food truck. Number three was either keep the second ADA accessible space or convert it into a standard space in coordination with city staff. And number five was enclose slash screen the dumpster and porta potty with wooden fencing wall, et cetera. Final design must be approved by planning staff.
Got it.
So, your motion grants a five-year term?
Correct.
Wait, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll check in the motion.
Uh, we have a second from Commissioner Casados. Um, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion of the motion? I personally am not in favor of a five-year term, given the fact that the conditions were not met and that we might have code changes. Um, glad that's entertaining for you, Director Gillette, or Planner Gillette?
It's just incredible, as usual for you, so, yeah. You have a double standard for everybody. It's amazing.
Wow.
Yeah.
Um, I would also prefer that the second handicap space be retained. I'm not sure we can do an either or as a condition of approval.
It's not a requirement.
I would also like, I would also like a condition, and I'm not sure it's appropriate, um, but I would like to see the GRT reporting on this establishment to be sure that the city is actually, uh, receiving GRT income from this establishment. Um, just as a condition, it could be for a hearing or rear. I don't see a need necessarily going forward. I would just like proof, um, that this establishment is actually paying GRT taxes. Uh, it has an unfair advantage over existing restaurants, um, in the, in the city fixed assets. Um, it doesn't provide the type of access. Uh, but I love your restaurant and I love your plates. Um, but I think it is a concern and it's something that the, uh, I believe the city is.
Well, we've got a comment from the city clerk related to the capacity to evaluate the GRTs.
I'm sorry?
We have a comment from the city clerk related to our capacity to engage with GRTs in our business registration. Okay, my apologies, I misunderstood. I do, I would like to make a comment on the matter that when we get done.
All right, so this is discussion of the motion as presented. Um, those are my concerns with this motion. Um, I really and truly cannot support a five-year term. Um, I was not present at the meeting where this was adopted. Um, and I am concerned and I don't think it's an acceptable, um, position to say, well, all of these things happens and they slip through the cracks.
You know, so many businesses.
The property owner himself has said he's not aware of it, but what is actually in the letter written to the applicant three years ago. And that concerns me that that was not, that there was no knowledge or recollection of that condition. That is a concern. Um, but then the commission takes these actions seriously and expects the conditions of approval to be met. That's my comments. Commissioners, I don't know how you feel. If there's any further, if there's no further debate, I will call a question.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a statement related to the GRT. If that's acceptable.
Uh, but on that point, yes. But please keep it short.
So specifically to the GRT, as our office has been engaged with the city court's office, that's why I misunderstood your comment, uh, around business registrations. Um, this business has maintained a consistent business registration with the city. Um, and as we've engaged in that process, um, we have come to learn that we are not allowed as the city to request, uh, copies or submittals that are provided by businesses to tax and revenue. They just won't let us do it. Um, and the only thing that they will allow us to get is the summary reports that they send back with the GRT payment. So, because that was a goal, we wanted to get GRT verification from every single business. And they told us no.
Understood that, but that this is a special use permit? So, this is an opportunity for the city to actually get what they want.
What I'm saying is, our understanding is from tax and revenue, we not ask a business for copies of their files. But that's not allowed by state law. Otherwise, we would do it for a lot of businesses.
Understood. No, thank you for that clarification. That's important because I'm not sure, and I'm not even sure, do you even pay GRT on takeout food? You do. It's not part of the food exemption?
Not, not any, it's not any different than any other, their, their facility is not different than any other restaurants.
Yeah.
Now, I would say that's an, I would say that that's an overstepping of our criteria. That's outside our criteria.
Um, it's a condition that can be applied. It's a conditional approval, so. And again, it was a suggestion. I understand now that, that it's against, probably against state law, so, yeah, I get that. So, I'll back off on that one, but I'm not happy with the five-year term. I can absolutely tell you that. I'm, it depends on the commissioner. Commissioners, any further discussion of this? In that case, I will call the question. It needs to be a roll call vote. Um, is everybody clear on the five conditions? Do we need those reread? I don't see anybody shaking their head or saying yes. So, we have a motion for conditional approval of case number twenty twenty dash oh seven uh, for a five-year term on the special use. The applicant shall install the one van access. Richard, can you repeat it for me? I'm sorry.
Absolutely. So, um, condition one, special use permit take effect on Wednesday, July fifteenth, remain valid until Tuesday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, condition number two, these are abbreviated, applicant to install one ADA van accessible space with an accessible aisles of the food truck. Uh, condition three, either keep the second ADA space or convert it to a standard space in coordination with city staff. Number four, remove the covered speedboats and no other inoperative vehicles, RVs, or et cetera, be allowed to park in this property or adjacent. And number five, enclose or screen the, enclose slash screen the dumpster and porta potty with wooden fencing wall, et cetera, as approved by planning staff.
Very good. I will call the question. As this is a virtual meeting, we need to do this by roll call vote. Do, please call roll.
Uh, Commissioner Donna Casados.
In favor?
Commissioner Clyde Hill?
In favor?
Commissioner Diana Quintana?
Against.
Commissioner Anissa Martinez?
Against.
Uh, Commissioner Eric Martinez?
In favor?
And Commissioner Hallwright?
Against. The motion fails on a tie. Um, could we have an additional? Will the commission consider, um, another motion? And if not, this permit will end up getting denied if there's not another motion.
Can the, if I have application, can the initial motion maker make an additional or a different motion?
I'm sorry?
Uh, the initial motion maker make an additional motion, doesn't that seem to be something that's very different? But the final, the question I've asked.
Nice, but many motions as you want. So, commissioners, is there another motion? Commissioner Eric Martinez?
I have a question to those that voted against the motion. Uh, if it was for the timeline, what timeline, uh, time period are you in favor of? Four years, three years, two years?
Um, my tendency would be to, based on not doing the paving. Um, I think there was conditions in the previous motion that, that the plantings had to be done immediately. If you will reference your board packet. Um, so there's ways, and again, this is a special use permit and conditions are appropriate if we do conditional approval to ensure that, um, that an ADA space actually gets put in there. I understand Commissioner Quintana's concerns with this, and I've had the same thing, um, with, with my own mother-in-law, with my swagla, who was in a wheelchair and it's very difficult to get through gravel. And we have a lot of disabled veterans here. Um, I think it's absolutely critical that they be able to get there. And I think there needs to be more than one ADA space. Um, so that was my reasons for, to explain my vote. I wasn't happy with the term, and I think there need to be two ADA spaces. Otherwise, I'm full supporter of your restaurant. I think it's awesome. You got great food.
So, for those of you can't hear, the applicant was just saying she's happy to do whatever we suggest. If we need two spaces, she's happy to do that.
So, Commissioner Martinez, that, that's, um, my answer. I would rather see two ADA spaces. I'd like to see a little more teeth about getting the paving done since that condition was completely ignored in the last three years. And again, maybe by no fault of the applicant and the turnover at staff. I'm not, I don't want to point any fingers about that, but I think we need to be clear that ADA parking needs to be paved. Um, and I heard, uh, Planner Gillette's concerns and the issues that we have. It's like pulling teeth to get people to pave, uh, for handicap access in this town, but we have to put our foot down and it has to happen. Um, and so I'm supportive of that. I understand the frustrations that staff has to go through here. Um, it, it's not an easy job and it's not, we have a culture that doesn't like being regulated. Uh, that's the nature of the beast here.
So, Mr. Chair, on that front, that's more of a condition? That's more, that's more of a condition for staff to follow through on it than a condition of approval for the applicant? But you're, you're still wanting to speak that?
Martinez, I refer, I would refer you to the previous case, and there was language in that approval. If the conditions weren't met, the special use permit wasn't all in void. And there was also a timeline to get the paving done. I would be more comfortable with a motion like that. And, and if the commission's happy, I'll craft a motion. I, I prefer to avoid doing it as chair, but sometimes I'm forced to.
Well, my suggestion is that one who opposed the previous motion, make a motion so that we can get through this.
I'm searching for the language in the previous approvals. And you dropped the requirement, you didn't add the requirement for the signage, correct?
Or the.
Stop sign.
No, I did not.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm, I'm going back to the old approval. So let's try this. I would make a motion to, for conditional approval of case number twenty twenty dash oh seven with the following commit, conditions. Special use permit will take effect on Wednesday, July fifteenth, and remain valid... Until... July fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Barring any relevant changes to the zoning and development code, the applicant... Will need to apply for a new special use permit prior... To July twenty... Twenty-three. Um, prior to the July twenty-three Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Um... Special use permits are non-transferable. I would add condition two, that if any changes relevant, um, to mobile food trucks or locations be adopted by the city, uh, that the applicant must, would be given six months' time to come in compliance with any new regulations adopted dirt, by the City of Espanola during the duration of the special use permit. So in other words, if the regulations change, they would... Um... Should any relevant changes to the City of Espanola zoning and development code occur within the duration of this special use permit, the applicant would have six months to come in compliance with those regulations. Does that make sense? Relevant, yeah, releva, relevant to... Mobile food trucks or temporary dining establishments. I mean, we can craft it, we're... You need to have it make sense. Yeah. Yeah.
Could you include us in on that conversation you guys just talked?
Could you repeat that? Second, this is the second condition of appro, of... Condition of approval that I'm recommending, that is basically, should the development code change in regards to this type of establishment? And I would say mobile food truck or temporary dining, temporary eating establishment? Because technically, the wheel's knocked off this truck, and it's not mobile.
Would you say food truck?
You could say. That they, that the applicant would have six months to come into compliance with those regulations during the duration of this special use permit.
I don't want that bad, if you like. I'm, I'm giving myself...
So, Richard can read that, we're trying to craft it, so Richard can read that out loud for you?
So it would be new condition number two, should any changes relevant to food trucks or temporary eating establishments occur to the Espanola Development Code within the duration of this special use permit, the applicant will have six months to come into compliance with those regulations.
Um, condition number three, the applicant shall install one, and essentially, Eric's previous one, one van accessible ADA parking space, eleven-foot space, five, with a striped five-foot aisle, must be paved, striped, marked, and signed with ADA accessible... Aisle to the food truck. Um... Condition number four, uh, convert the second ADA space into, to also pave the second ADA space as just a standard ADA space, not necessarily bandwidth. Is that possible? My thought is, if they're paving anyway, they should just do two. It's a big expense to get a truck out there, so, that's my thinking.
We just shorten that to develop a second ADA accessible space in coordination with city staff.
We haven't required that of anybody else. Why would we do that of them?
Because that is the motion that I'm crafting.
But what's the reasoning behind it?
To accommodate more than one handicap person at this restaurant. And please stop interrupting the commission, thank you.
Any changes to number five?
Uh, number four...
Four? Because we added it to number two.
Yeah, number, uh, no. So it's converted, and I, I would say it needs to be adjacent, it's gonna save them money. And it's already there, and they have to provide the pa, password.
Develop a second ADA accessible space adjacent to the van accessible space?
Yes.
So is that the precedent you're wanting to set for everybody that only has eight parking spaces, that, that twenty-five percent of them need to be ADA accessible?
Yes.
That's the precedent we're gonna use? If that's what you wanna stand by, even though it's not actually in the code and code compliant, is that what you're gonna stand by?
For a special use permit under this, yes, I think the conditions are appropriate. I think the conditions are appropriate. And I think we owe it to some of this, to the, to not only disabled citizens of this town, but also people who drive through this town.
You, for them to have...
Uh, uh, would you please stop interrupting? We're trying to craft a motion here. Condition number five is to remove covered speedboat from the property, any other inoperable vehicles, RVs, et cetera, may not be parked on the property, or... May not be parked on the property. I don't think we can include adjacent properties. This permit only applies to the property in question. Enclose or screen the dumpster and porta potty with wooden fencing wall, uh, or other screening design, final design must be approved by the planning staff. Did I get the porta potty in there?
Can I read all the, all the conditions?
Commissioners, would you like to have those conditions read to you?
Yes.
If you would, please, Director Hubler.
Okay, so, uh, this would be an approval with the following conditions. Uh, condition one, special use permit will take effect on Wednesday, July fifteenth, and remain valid until fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Barring any relevant changes to the zoning and development code, the applicant will need to apply for a new special use permit prior to the July twenty twenty-three Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, special use permits are not transferable. Number two, should any changes relevant to food trucks or temporary eating establishments occur to the Espanola Development Code within the duration of this special use permit, the applicant will have six months to come into compliance with those regulations. Condition three, applicant shall install one van accessible ADA parking space, eleven-foot space with striped five-foot aisle, must be paved, striped, marked, and signed with an ADA accessible aisle to the food truck. Number four, develop a second ADA accessible space adjacent to the van accessible space in coordination with city staff. Condition five, remove covered speedboat from the property, any other inoperable vehicles, RVs, et cetera, may not be parked on the property. And condition six, enclose or screen the dumpster and porta potty with wooden fencing wall or other screening design, final design must be approved by planning staff.
Um, and I need to amend that motion. Number... Two needs to say, add the phrase at the beginning, within six months, the applicant shall install...
Number two, oh, ADA van...
Uh, number three, sorry, number three, the paving. Number three, the paving, within six months. So says Mesa's to pave the handicap parking. Is that okay? All right, thumbs up, applicant gave his thumbs up. Uh, and I also want to add, condition seven, to mimic what the prior commission had put in, failure to begin or complete any required action authorized at the time of granting the special use will void the special use.
Be done, okay?
Failure to begin or complete any required action authorized at the time of granting the special use shall void the special use. That was condition number twelve in your twenty seventeen approval. So it's, it's, uh, necesitan, to do todo, los condiciones, condiciones. The Espanola's muy mal. I'm glad you guys are getting a kick out of it. They're all laughing at me.
No bueno, no bueno.
No bueno. So that is my motion. Is there any, um, clarification of the motion, or is that one you're gonna die for lack of a second?
Just a question, clarification. So, on the condition about converting or about maintaining two ADA spaces, I mean, in, in principle, I'm, I'm okay with it, I think more is better, uh, that's going above the minimums. Um, and I think the applicant is more than willing to do anything to get approval, um, that's why I left it, um... To, to their judgment, to their, uh, whether to convert it or not, and that was the basis of my motion before, so just as an explanation, um... Now, I don't know if requiring it, uh, over and above minimums, um, sets a precedence or not, um, but it's, uh, it can get sticky, potentially, or challenged. But either way, I'm okay with it, it seems that the applicant is also... So...
And I understand your concern, and I think that was the concern that, uh, Planner Gillette had, is that that is above the minimum. Um, however, I've been in that lot, I've seen it fully parked up, and I think it's unfortunate if you have to turn away business just because there's a van parked there, and they decided to sit in this nice, well-landscape place and have lunch, and a disabled vet comes up and isn't able to eat there. I don't, I think the paving increase are minimal, uh, this is a special use permit, this is typically, or we wouldn't even be allowing it, so I think it's well within the city's rights, in my opinion, but I'm not an attorney, um, to do this on a, on a special, as a special use permit, that gives us that ability to do these conditions. That would be my response, but I, I understand your concerns, Commissioner Martinez, Vice-Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
As well as, uh, Planner Gillette's.
We didn't, I guess, say...
Hmm? Right, so there's a motion on the floor, is there a second to this motion?
All second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion of the motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to, um, let the commission know that this motion is actually pretty much almost identical to the original motion. The original motion granted three years, and the applicant had to follow some conditions which they have without, I mean, less the ADA parking, um, pav, paving, which she promised that would get done. Um, because in the original motion to approve, it does specify two ADA compliant parking spaces. And I also wanted to commend the applicant for the beautiful trees that they have planted. Muchas gracias por los árboles. Se miran muy bonitos, muchas gracias. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anissa Martinez. Anyone else? Seeing no further discussion, I will call the question. We have a motion, uh, for conditional approval of case number two thousand twenty dash oh seven. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Don Casas.
In favor.
Commissioner Faiyil.
In favor.
Commissioner Diana Quintana.
Against.
Commissioner Anissa Martinez.
In support, thank you.
Commissioner Eric Martinez.
Favor.
And Chair Hallright.
I guess I have to vote for my own motion. I'll vote in favor of the motion. With the, how many conditions of approval? Seven conditions of approval. Three more years. So, Pachis, thank you for your, asencia. Thank you for providing us wonderful food. Appreciate it. Okay. Uh, next item of business is adoption of final decisions.
We're bringing up, uh, the amended...
Okay. And commissioners, if we need to take a little break, uh, we're gonna bring up and edit the final decision based on the motions. So, if anyone needs a bio break or a drink of water, um, we'll take five, how's that? Everybody okay with that? Thank you. Is that okay, Richard? Is that okay, Richard?
I didn't make my two hour for almost... Forty minutes. Not as much, uh, or just have to... But that was...
There's Commissioner Anissa Martin.
You're welcome.
Are we back live? So Commissioners, we are back streaming again. Um, the... Next item of business is adoption of final decisions. The final decision should be up on your screen for case number 2020-07. Do we still have a quorum present? I see Commissioner V. Hill, I see Commissioner Martinez, Anissa Martinez. I see Commissioner Diana Quintana. So we do have a quorum. Did we lose, no, Eric's there, I see Commissioner Don Casados. Uh... Commissioners, do you, are, are you all able to see the findings for case 2020-07?
Yes.
Eric is back. Supposed to bring enough coffee to share Commissioner Eric Martinez. He didn't hear me.
All right. I heard you.
I didn't bring water to share either. So, can everybody hear me?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Next item of business is adoption of the final decision on case 2020-07. Uh, the first six conditions are up.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question on condition number four. Do we need to specify paved?
Uh, Director Hubler says the ADA guidelines specify paved, but I think, um, that's appropriate. The intention of the motion was to have both those done within six months. And if the commission is comfortable, we can go back and amend that motion. Or we can, um, the findings are the binding, um, document here. So that was the intention of my motion, that both spaces be done within six months. And if we want to add that correction to item four, that also within six months, a second, uh...
A second paved ADA accessible...
A second paved ADA space adjacent to the van accessible space. That's a good catch, thank you, Anissa.
You're welcome.
Um... So can we type that in there? Is that possible?
Um, yeah, well, I'll get it.
No, no, no problem, I understood. The wonders of technology. Thank you. Understood.
Adding language, she number four to say within six months.
Within six months. Or maybe also within six months? Yeah. Um, and I should say shall develop, just to be specific. Really and truly, those could have been combined, but... Can we share that back out to the commission? No, no problem. Yes, it is back, thank you. Commissioners, can you all see that? So number four has been adjusted to say also within six months, the applicant shall develop a second paved ADA accessible space, adjacent to the van accessible space in coordination with city staff. Can we scroll down, Richard, to see... Can we scroll down to see five, six, and seven? So enclose the screening dumpster and port a party. I have the same language. Well, no, no, that's fine, that was in the previous one. That's it. And can we see the rest of it? Por favor.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Anissa Martinez.
I have another question on item number four. The applicant has provided a lease with the property owner. Do you think we need to specify that, we need to get a current copy of the current lease?
That was not part of the motion, and that's a good catch, that should be struck because we weren't, there wasn't a valid lease in the packet.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I should have caught that, I had it in my notes. Can we say after full and lengthy hearing? Oh, that's okay, I'll pass on that. Any other corrections, Commissioners? I don't see any hands. Do we have a motion to approve the... Do we have a motion to approve the findings as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the final decision for case twenty twenty dash zero seven.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second to approve the findings on case number two thousand twenty dash oh seven. I, again, it's virtual meeting. You have to do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Don Casados? Commissioner Don Casados?
I, he's muted, but I saw him say he's in favor.
Commissioner Clyde V. Hill?
I'm in favor. Yes.
Commissioner Dinah Quintana?
In favor.
Commissioner Anisa Martinez?
In favor.
My Commissioner Eric Martinez?
In favor.
And Chair Orlway.
In favor of the motion to approve the findings of fact. On the conclusions of law for case number twenty twenty dash oh seven.
Chair, if I could make the recommendation, given the time that we adjourned the meeting and continue these items to the next meeting, or a special session if it can be arranged.
Uh, commissioners, we are three minutes past our recommended three-hour allotment of time. Director Hubler is suggesting that we, uh, table these other matters until either a special session via Zoom meeting or our next meeting. What is the pleasure of the commission?
Your chair, just a question. Do folks have any lately changes to the minutes? I only have one minor one.
Uh, which minutes are you referring to?
Both. Well, the, the minor changes on the, the first set of minutes.
Uh, I had changes to the second set, not so much to the first set. So the minutes from the February twenty seventh, twenty twenty work session?
Is it gonna take awhile?
If you have that, we could, uh, mm, no, I would probably table the June eleventh minutes, although do we need those for appeal? So Vice Chair, if you have a quick one on the twenty seventh, I would do it. That is the next order of business. And again, it's a will of the commission. Pleasure of the commission of what to proceed.
You, you mentioned approving the June eleventh minutes for the appeal. Is that, is that required?
No, Director Hubler indicated that was not required.
Okay. Well, I would say for the, uh, February twenty seventh, uh, work session minutes is on page three. Fourth paragraph. Vice Chair E. Martinez noted. And I would add, and appreciated, the ambitious nature of the list. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. And if anybody else-
Did you actually say that?
That was my intent.
Okay. We're good then. I found no other, uh, issues with those minutes. Personally, so I don't know if anyone else did. If there's a motion to approve with that amendment.
I move to approve as amended.
Second.
I'll second that motion. Commissioner Anisa Martinez is second in that motion. And again, I need a roll call since we're virtual.
My Commissioner Casados?
Favor.
Our Commissioner V. Hill?
A favor, in favor.
Commissioner Quintana?
In favor.
Commissioner, uh, Anisa Martinez?
In favor.
Vice Chair Eric Martinez?
In favor.
And Chair Orlway.
In favor of approval of the February twenty seventh, twenty twenty work session minutes. Motion carries six zero.
Court is packing up.
Um, so I would suggest we table, uh, the remaining items, which would be approval of the June twelfth, twenty twenty regular meeting minutes and the adoption of the policy statement on deadlines for packets middle completeness, packet completeness, and readiness of packets for public hearings. I suggested.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to table the items in, or, or everything in, let me see, seven, item number seven after number one, including number two on up to item number three, I'm sorry, eight, nine, and ten, uh, until, um, next, uh, next month's meeting.
That can't-
So you would like-
We can't table item ten.
Watch, watch me.
We'll be here forever.
Hey.
We'll be taking lots of roll call votes on that.
Okay, exclude item number ten. I'm sorry about, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
Item number ten.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a second by Commissioner Casados.
Commissioner Don Casados?
Yes.
Commissioner Clyde V. Hill?
Uh, yes.
You're taking roll call vote?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I, I was, Commissioner Casados made the second. They have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Don Casados?
In favor.
Commissioner Clyde V. Hill?
In favor.
Commissioner Danny Quintana?
In favor.
Commissioner Anisa Martinez?
In favor.
Vice Chair Eric Martinez?
Favor.
Chair Orlway.
In favor.
Do we join?
Uh, do we have unanimous consent to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion.
Second the motion.
And a second. If anyone is in opposition, I will declare it as unanimous consent to adjourn the meeting, unless someone is, has a objection. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.